In our workshop setting, Captain Hook, will you open us up to prayer?
Father, we're thankful for this opportunity together as a body. We're going to discuss our county's business, Lord. And we pray, God, that we go into this workshop and we keep an open mind, Lord, and Father God, let, Father, the facts guide us. Father, we pray for those in Nashville, Lord, here this evening. We pray for those families that's lost children. Father, those families that won't go home this evening, that their children will be waiting for them to return, but won't be there. Lord, and we pray for comfort, Lord. Lord, and not only those, Father, but the officers and first responders and all of those that had to take part in such a tragic, Lord. Lord, and we pray, God, that you just comfort their hearts, Father, and be with them in the days to come. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Mr. Park, please, is it a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, may be seated. If you would, silence your cell phones. So, I guess we don't need to call, we do need to call, Lord.
We have everybody but Wilson and Bill.
All right, well, that's good enough for, we're recorded. Two minutes, we're recorded. All right, thank you, sir. All right, so let me state the objective outlined tonight for this special call meeting. It's within dealing with these critical pains for the deputies of Roan County. With that said, we cannot take any vote tonight because we're in a workshop setting. We won't take no vote. So, and we have no set agenda. I know we have a lot of people that want to voice and a lot of people want to speak. So, I think, first off, Mr. Executive, I think we should open it up to our body first, then I'll open it up to the citizens out in public. Go ahead.
Senator, if you had a copy of the agenda we had created, just to...
No, I do not.
It's right there. Is it not right there?
It is now. All right, well, I've got everything there. So, as I think we all know, is there's a shortfall in our pay for our deputies. How much is shortfall? Where is it at? Where are we going to? And what can we do without raising taxes? So, with that said, I'll turn it over to the county executive first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and look at your agendas. This will be the introduction. I really just wanted to take time to really kind of set the stage and provide context as we, as we discuss what the sheriff's going to present to us and then what we've been working on and ways we can address those shortfalls. I wanted to make sure that we're looking at this, that we don't look at this issue invacing. We can't look at any of our departments as standalone departments. We've got to, particularly as we're going in this budget season, be able to step back and look at the whole thing. So, with that being said, I wanted to kind of paint the picture for what this current budget year looks like, how we got here, and then kind of set the stage moving forward. And I've written it down so I do not chase rabbits and stay on track in the interest of time. So, before we start, I want to take some time to discuss our current general fund budget and how we arrived at this point. So, stop me if I lose you in the numbers, I'll be glad to back up and say it again. For fiscal year '23, the current year, county commission approved a general fund budget of $24,155,479. The budget, that budget has since been amended to $25,43,630. Hang with me. That includes a $1 million transfer into debt service, 151. This year's current budget includes $1 million that was scheduled to go in, or it has been gone into 151. For this year, revenues were projected to be, this was at the beginning of the year, That means that the current budget we are in after fallout is accounted for, which is roughly 10%. That means that it requires $2.5 million of fund balance to cover expenditures, exactly $2,513,085 to cover expenditures, fund balance, this year. That's what was planned. It's been amended, it's not roughly the same numbers, but going, I'm using budget planning numbers because we're in budget planning season, just to make, try to be as apple to apple as possible. For reference, in fiscal year '22, the general fund budget was approved at $21,262,865. That means that the general fund budget grew year over year by 13.6% from FY '22 to FY '23. So, before you jump to conclusions about spending a bunch of fund balance to balance this budget, you need to know that our fund balance policy says that we must keep 35 to 40% of fund balance relative to overall expenditures, meaning that you've got to keep 35 to 45% set aside that you don't spend to remain compliant with our policy relative to what you spend overall that year in the fund balance. So, on July 1st of this year, we sat at 53.9% fund balance relative to total expenditures. Remember, we got, to be compliant, this needs to be at 35 to 45, and we started the year at 53.9. So, it made sense to spend down some of that fund balance. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't a bad decision to do that because we had plenty to spend to stay within our policy. After this year, and you're going to see it in some of our projections now, but after this year, we anticipated our fund balance will be at 46.6%. That's on June 30th, 2023, 46.6, still above compliance. Remember, 35 to 45. So, we'll, but here's the point I'm making there. We'll have to be careful moving forward whenever we use fund balance to balance the budget so that, I mean, I'm not sure, because I'm not reading, I'm talking too much. We would need to be, have to be careful moving forward whenever we use fund balance to balance the budget so that we do not ever drop below what our fund balance policy says we have to have. I'm saying that to let you know, we got to pay attention to that so we don't ever drop below that 35%. Tonight, we want to describe to you our most immediate needs that Sheriff's going to talk about, and then potential solutions on how to meet those needs. And Connie and I are going to be able to discuss some ways that we could potentially do that. What I, what I want to say to you is this, all of this must be considered with a big picture in mind. That's why I want to talk about the fund balance before we talk about the sheriff's portion of it. And don't lose sight of the fact that the sheriff's and the jail budget only make up part of the general fund, currently 37.9%. The sheriff and the jail make up, in FY '23, 37.9% of the general fund. So, my only request for all of you tonight is to listen to everything we discuss before drawing conclusions. There are many ways we could go about solving these issues. Our staff and our sheriff's staff have been working really hard to get you the absolute best information to help you make the best decisions for the county moving forward. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you so that we can turn to the sheriff.
All right, Sheriff Rick knows, is Sheriff Jack Stockton.
Good evening. So, we're here tonight to make you aware of the critical situation we're in. We're trying to retain employees, and we're needing your help and guidance to do that. We've got employees that are going to different agencies that are making more money, better benefits, whatever the case might be. And I've heard rumors that some of them are leaving for other reasons, and I assure you that's not true. We have internal issues everywhere I've ever worked, and there's going to be internal issues other than just funding. And I don't say that we don't have some of those issues, but we do correct them when we find out that we do have issues. The money is what the officers today are chasing. They cannot feed their families, they cannot provide the benefits that they need to survive on, can't put groceries on the table. Most of them, by the time they bring their money home today, have around $28,000 a year to live on. And I don't think one man or woman sitting here today can live on $28,000 on a house of income that you're bringing home. And it's really tough, and we need your guidance and help to get to where we need to be, to retain these employees, the most professionally highly trained people as possible for us and for you, protect your families and your county. And I'm asking for that tonight, and we prepared a PowerPoint presentation for you. And I'm going to let Chief Phillips provide that for you, and then we'll answer any questions you may have before we leave to that. Thank you very much.
How many employees have you lost since the...
I'm sorry?
How many employees have you lost since the last week?
Since last year?
Last week.
Last week?
Yeah.
I've got three that's going to Rockwood, and I've got one that's going to the plant. And I've got several more that's looking for work now.
Thank you.
Higher paying job.
Appreciate it. Sheriff, if I may, sir, while they're trying to set this up, could you please explain $2,800? You said $2,800...
$28,000 per year, I'm sorry, I made a mistake.
It was $28,000.
Yes, that's the right number.
Okay, $28,000.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Sheriff? Sheriff, how many employees told right now that's right off the bat, two, thirty or short, told, lefties?
Uh, there's, you're talking about overall, county jail? One or two are short in the jail and probably nine on patrol.
Out of how many, Sheriff?
Sir.
Out of how many?
One hundred and one.
Twenty-nine short out of twenty-four?
Yes, on patrol, twenty-three.
And your investigation?
We worked down two investigators. One went to be the director of 911, and the other one's going to work for Tennessee Highway Safety Office, making sure of my money.
You say you have nine short, nine, nine in trouble.
There's eight, eight in trouble right now. Number moves.
I'm sorry, you said, no, somewhere, didn't you?
Yeah, and then we've got two detectives. I think John Walker took the director's position at 911, and then John Mays is going to the Tennessee Highway Safety Office as an instructor for, excuse me, statewide coordinator.
Chief, you have told what, four investigators were pushed out?
No. Make sure I'm telling you right.
Chief, can you do that from here?
Sure.
Okay.
Seven detectives. You've got five criminal investigators, two narcotics investigators, and still, you know...
I tell you, we lost three, Captain Ryan, also at 911.
Lost Brian, lost John Mays, and then we have one that may have retired because of federal offenses.
Not here, of course, field agents, works murder or whatever.
They work everything from property crime to murders. You know, whenever we had the homicide down on Deharm and Road, every one of them came out to help process the scene. There was a lot going on, so it's tough to do that, you know? What kind of bouncing you have? I don't know if we're uniformed, sir. I can go get a line, yes, sir. I just put a PowerPoint together just to kind of try to hit some highlights, and I know a lot of people haven't come out and rode with us or been through the jail or may have some questions. And I'm just trying to hit some highlights on some of the activities our guys and girls do throughout the day. And I tried to condense it because of time, and, you know, I'm saying as least as I can say with, you know, the least amount of PowerPoints, you just can't do it in five or 10 slides, so... I figured it'd be seven. That's what happens when you use Microsoft.
Should be up in the red toolbar where you could start the...
Yeah, I got it, it just keeps popping up. Let's accept that.
Oh, that's accepted.
Yes, sir. All right, I appreciate everybody taking time to listen to us because it's important to us that we're having issues and staffing and things like that. And part of what we're trying to do is incentivize our employees from a monetary standpoint, because most of us know that it takes money to make things happen and just to provide a basic service for our families. So, basically, you know, the sheriff's elected spot, everybody knows that, and these are just the statutory duties, and it describes part of what we have to do on a daily basis as far as keeping the peace, attending the courts, serving the process and the orders of the courts. Everything from orders of protections, writs of possessions, where people are evicting people from their homes, you know, we have to have a deputy go out and sit with landlords and people like that to get them out of the property. You know, we operate the jail, which is a, you know, you drive by that place, and it doesn't look like there's anything going on, but that thing's a 24/7 operation, and I grant you, there's stuff going on 24/7 in there. So, just kind of a brief rundown of the statutory duties of the sheriff. You know, here's one of the things, and I know you guys know this, but at the end of the day, what we do on the patrol side and the jail side, it's a high liability job. And, you know, the citizens of Roan County depend on us. When they call and ask for a deputy or ask for an ambulance or ask for fire protection, you know, we want to provide that service. And I'm not going to lie, right now, we're struggling. We're struggling to be able to do the things that we normally do. You look at, you know, 300 something square miles, we cover a lot of ground, and we do it with less people. We do more with less people, and I'm going to get into that further on the PowerPoint as far as what the city's doing, what they're responsible for, and then what we do and what we're responsible for. If you will, we've interviewed a lot of people from different agencies. It's, hey, you know, we want to come over there, and some of it's us. Said, okay, this person's just not a fit because they may have had some baggage or something. Or, you know, we've lost other people to say, you know, the pay's kind of there, but the benefits, you know, I don't want to start name calling, but a guy from a neighboring county's like, you know, if it wasn't for the benefits, I'd probably come. So, that's been a factor, pay's been a factor. So, you know, we've had people interested. You know, we want to make sure we got the right person. We don't want to just hire anybody because at the end of the day, we're, it's a high liability job. We're all responsible, me, the sheriff, the chief, and all of our supervision, but, you know, county executive, you know, when we get sued, you're the first name on the lawsuit. So, you know, we want to do the right thing and choose the right people for the job. And, you know, whether it's in the jail, you know, we talk about patrolling the jail, they're both equally important, you know? The people in jail are there for a reason, and there's certain responsibilities that we have through TCI to make sure that we're doing things properly. And you've got to have highly trained folks in that job as well. It's not like it was 20 years ago. You know, things are different. Everything's evolved in this line of work. So, you know, we're counting on deputies and corrections making split second decisions and the right decisions. You know, we don't get a chance to sit back and say, well, you know, I would have done this or I would have done that. You know, they've got to make a decision and hope it's the right decision every time they do it. And I tell everybody, you know, we're just ordinary people doing a, providing a service to the citizens of this county, and we put our pants on the same way everybody else does, one leg at a time. You know, we just chose this profession. Those of us, I've been doing it 28 years. I'm passionate about this job and about this profession. And everybody that's got more than five minutes' worth of experience that's still doing it, we're here for a reason. And when I started, it's $17,200 a year. And I don't know what it was when Mr. Hook started, but... So, and I know this is going to bore you guys, but it leads to the end, the end part. Population's 53,000 folks, lands 361 square miles, water 34, which you don't think, you know, we do some water stuff because TWRA, like, we had it grounded, and they're like, we're not going to come to that. If it's a boating accident, we'd come to it, so we have to go out there. We have to recover the body, we have to go through the investigative process. We do have a boat, there's certain functions that we do. So, that's why I put the water in there. We don't do a whole lot on there, but there's some responsibilities we do have with a total of 395 square miles. The breakdown of the population there, again, Hermans population, and I got all this stuff off the internet, so it's census numbers, and that stuff could change here and there. And when you look at the square miles for the entire county, like Hermans, 58, 192 with 10 and a half square miles. I worked there, I worked there for eight years, and you could just about get anywhere you wanted to quick, fast, and in a hurry. It's not the case in the county. You know, if I got three people working right now, depending on where those three people are at, if you have a call with the Erie community or a call in Oliver Springs, and say, for example, I went on a call one day, I was in Rockwood, and they had a guy with a gun over off River Road at the Mex County line. I was the closest one there, I had to go, I went all the way down, cut across, and come back up through Mex County to get that, it's the fastest way to get there. So, when you start talking about backup in time, you know, the water separating us and being able to get places is tough, and then, you know, I-40, that's another, that's another demon of ours from a law enforcement standpoint. You have one bad wreck, it messes everything, not just for us, but for the city of Kingston when they route the people off and everything. So, everything's going to point to, we're doing, we're doing more with less, the different populations, the square miles. Here's our patrol zones, and that's a rough draw of my art over there. But we try to split up Hermann Oliver, Hermann Oliver Springs one zone, east of Kingston, south of the river. We try to have an individual officer in each zone. Part of, whenever the sheriff ran and got elected, you know, response times, that was one of the biggest complaints, is when I call a deputy, I want one. I want one relatively quick, and I don't want to have wait 45 minutes or an hour or whatever that case may be. Well, that's a service that we've tried to provide, and by doing that, we broke the zones down and we try to keep people in their zones. It's almost impossible. So, if I got, if I got four working, I got four in each zone, I get a domestic down off Poplar Creek, I'm sending two there, I'm not sending one. You get a wreck on the interstate, you probably send them one, maybe two. You got nobody left. So, like, when you call the police, they might be coming, they might not be coming. That's the kind of situation that we're facing. That's the kind of situation that we're in. At 22 miles of Interstate 40 is the devil. It's, it creates a lot of staffing issues for us. I have personally, in the last six months, been to two fatalities up there which shut the interstate down completely. A van run underneath a semi truck, killed two people. Semi truck jumped the center median. The driver got out, the passenger burned up, shut the entire interstate down. We don't have a staff to deal with the interstate. You know, the highway patrol, they had a reckless morning drunk guy coming down the interstate, driving crazy and hit another car. And when we asked for highway patrol to respond because of our staffing issue, they had to pull one from Anderson County. So, I don't know if they're having staffing issues or whatever the case may be, but it affects us, you know? Typically, our, and this is just a rundown of our zones, typically, we work three eight-hour shifts, try to do a deputy per zone. We'd like to have two rovers if we can get them. That's almost impossible, never, never, ever happens hardly. And part of what we do is the calls for service, warrants, civil process service, accidents, county roads, state highways, and mental transports. We, by law, are still responsible for mental health transports. They call us, hey, we got one at Roan Medical that's got to go to Moxon Bend, we do it. You got one at Roan Medical, got to go to the VA Hospital in Murphysboro, we do it. You got one that's been arrested in Lake Charles, Louisiana, and that's extraditable, we go do it. We got somebody in Phoenix, Arizona, that's arrested, that needs to be extradited, we go do it. I've been on all those trips. We do it all the time. We go to Georgia, you name it. We've been all over the country, been to Guam. Been to Guam, picked up a guy that failed to honor a subpoena. He got arrested, I cost $17,200 to send two people to get him and bring him back for 10 minutes of testimony. Like I said, we do the calls for service, and we got 23 deputies, including supervisors, that are assigned to the patrol. We've got three courthouse security folks, and that's, Daryl oversees the courthouse and the school resource officer, so he's in another pile, but he oversees them. So, you've got technically three that work the security counter down there. You've got 17 schools, you've got 13 current deputies with two positions still to be filled in the school resource officer side. When we talk about the civil papers, one of the, we're serving papers hand over fist, and we don't have a separate department for that. The people doing calls for service are the people doing the civil process. You know, we're doing it through the daylight hours, and the, you know, the laws govern some of the process that we serve. Like, if you're going to have bad weather this week, we can't do a writ of possession. We can't set you out or sit there while they set you out because there's so much liability on our side of things and the person having people set out. So, we do the mental health transports as well. We've got a training officer that manages, we've been in training for the last four weeks trying to do in-service, so, and then we got detectives working everything from murders, you know, simple thefts, drug cases, you know, we're having overdose deaths, you know, fentanyl's a big issue, so we've got a lot going on. We've got one deputy that's on a grant-funded position that does nothing but serve child support process. That's his main responsibility. Now, we're so shorthanded, he's helping us, and still, he's got to have a certain percentage of those child support papers served. So, we're kind of, he's earning his money, and we appreciate it because it's a lot of effort on him to do that. So, here's going to be some stats. This is for about 15 months. It goes back to January 1st of 2022 to today. And Roan County Sheriff's Office civil papers from that timeframe served 3,456 papers. And then if you look at the, right below that, the Roan County criminal papers, 27, 27 is what we've served. So, when you look at criminal papers for Rockwood PD, HPD, Kingston PD, THPOS PD, and ORPD, they serve 2,632 between all of them. We serve 2,727 just our agency. And when you look at the numbers of the officers, I'm going to show it to you on a few next slides, the breakdown there. We're serving the average of 230 civil papers a month and 182 criminal papers a month, just on the patrol side of the house.
Chief, let this call, sir, just, you're attempting, you're attempting to serve. So, you go out, they're not there, that's time spent, but you have to still serve that part of the jail. You may go...
Good point.
You may go five times before you catch.
Good point, yeah, and these are actually served papers. It doesn't, I've not got the data up there that shows you how many times we went there. We might have went there four, or we might have got lucky and got them the first try. You know, we've got door hangers, if you're not there, like on the civil paper. We don't leave door hangers for criminal papers. So, that's a good point. Calls for service, and here's another big thing. We start looking at, looking at like square miles for the cities and the county. You know, we cover a big area, but you look, we, for Roan County Sheriff's Office, 20,000 calls during that time frame. during that time frame, I mean, average thirteen-hundred-and-forty a month, forty-five a day. Uh, then you look at, um, Hermann Police Department's right behind us, um, with, with almost half of, of what we do, so, and their Hermann's covering ten and a half square miles, we're covering three hundred something square miles. Um, we go through oil changes like nobody's business, we might put a hundred and fifty miles or two hundred miles a day on a patrol car.
The chief inside the city corporate laments, if, if it's a situation that wants itself, county officers will respond to back up a city officer within the city, if that call runs that, is that correct?
Absolutely, we'll go anywhere and help anybody. I mean, that's just the type of business we're in, you know, if, if we've even went to help Morgan County, Morgan County's come to help us, same with the surrounding counties, you know, we build a good work relationship with Laven County, Knox County, Morgan County, Anderson County, uh, and that's, we, we have to do that, because, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the agencies are facing the same thing, Sheriff's Man in Knox County's down a hundred, uh, just on patrol, and then, you know, he's got, he's got a large jail, um, you know, everybody around us, um, are seeing some of the impacts, you know, um, we, we lost one this week to the plant, he's walking in, in the door up there, uh, chairman knows how much they make, it's more than what we're paying the deputy, and, and, and I, you know, I would never hold anybody back from making more money, supporting their family in, in doing that, you know, um, but I guess where, where we're at from, from a, from a, a standpoint is, is we're responsible for a lot of men and women that work at the sheriff's office, and we feel like we're the voice for them, and, um, you know, we're just, we're just trying to keep the profession where it's at, and, and get, keep good qualified people, and, you know, we're spending a lot of money, you know, I'm, I'm trying to get that number, and I, you know, in the past five years, we probably spent two and a half million dollars training people that ain't here no more. John Mays, it's fixing to leave, I can't tell you how much he's worth on paper, training wise. I mean, he's, I'm telling you, he, he, which I don't blame to the Highway Safety Office, um, John's a DRE instructor, and, um, he's gonna be the coordinator for the state of Tennessee for the DRE, that's big. When the officer got killed in Laven County, um, recently, Chris Jenkins, uh, John Mays is the one that went to Laven County to perform the field sobriety test and the, the DRE stuff on the, the suspect that was driving the semi-truck, so that's big. Um, and, and I don't blame him, uh, for trying to better, you know, his life is, is, um, you know, make more money. So here's the number of officers on patrol, uh, for the sheriff's office, we got twenty-three officers, uh, we currently have, uh, fifteen, uh, that's on patrol right now, and we, the rest of, we got eight openings. Um, Rockwood PD's, they're full, Hermann PD, they're full, KPD, they're full, ORPD, um, they've got forty officers, they're down twenty-nine, you know, um, ORPD, they, they're covering about eighty-five, uh, square miles. So when you look at their population, uh, their population based off what I looked at's about thirty-eight, forty thousand.
What's Anderson County?
Anderson County? I don't know. I don't know. Um, and the reason I, I picked these, these are people, they fall within Rome County in some way, um, so that's why these numbers, why we picked these numbers versus anything outside of Rome County, you know, portion, portion of Oliver Springs, small portions in the, you know, the, the Oak Hills portion of Oak Ridge. We've done two hundred and eighty-five transports during this timeframe from the January first of twenty-twenty-two to now. Uh, that's just patrol, that's not including the jail, jail's a different animal when it comes to, uh, the middle of the transports, they, we, we, we track data for them, for TCI on a different, on a different side. Here's the, here's what we have proposed, uh, to the commission, and last year, when, when, uh, when, uh, Mayor Woody was here, we, we had some separation issues from deputies up to certain ranks in, in the pay structure, and sitting down with, um, the mayor at the time and Connie, we came up with, with a number to kinda separate those out, and, and basically, I kept that same structure, um, whenever we put this together for, for the commission, and, you know, this is what we're asking for base pay, um, for, for deputies, and then the separation for the corporals, um, sergeants, you know, so on, so forth, all the way, you know, the sheriff's, uh, salary set by the state and, and everything.
Hey, chief, do you have any of that on paper? What you're asking for?
Yes, sir.
You do, can we get that passed out?
I don't, I don't, well, I didn't bring. Yeah, I didn't bring a spreadsheet, but yeah, I, I personally have it on paper, like on a spreadsheet that I sent.
Sorry, I was late. Found it, you're on birth.
I was to ask, the, uh, so, this here is kinda in reckoning, the, the numbers are off a little bit, I guess, is that? So that, Mr. Breckley?
Longevity.
Yeah, and I, and, and I'm gonna get to that in, on further in the PowerPoint, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. Um, so, so he, here's one of the things, and this is actually the next slide's longevity, so that's, that's one of the things that I think is important, and we think's important in, in this industry, is, is, you know, when I left Hermann, Hermann had a, had a, a program for every year you was there, you got incentivized, I can't remember what it was, um, but I lost every bit of that when I came to the county, and then, um, you know, when you look at it, I hope you don't mind me saying this, I'm just gonna say it, a deputy that gets hired today that's a certified officer makes, um, forty-four, seven-twenty-two. A deputy that's been here, I'm not gonna name his name, he's been here twenty years, he makes the same. That should not happen. So with, with, there, there's, there's a few circumstances where that's the case, uh, so, you know, we talked about what can you do to incentivize people to stay, you know, why, why should I work harder or stay, uh, if you're paying me the same thing that you're paying a patrol guy? Same thing with like, you know, sergeants, you got sergeants with this level of experience versus this level of experience, like, like detectives, um, you know, you, you've got, um, John Mays that's been a detective for some time, and then you got a new detective, they shouldn't make the same money. Um, so there should be some separation there, and that, that longevity pay incentive is what I think separates that, so. On this, this is pretty much everything on the patrol side of the house, and I'm gonna touch a little bit on the jail side of the house, because, um, part of what the sheriff and I did, I've been with the sheriff the whole time he's been in office, and, and, um, we, you know, when we started in this, in this venture, um, pay was just all over the board, and, um, the patrol and the jail are, are, are too big, they're too big beasts, they are, and, um, they're equally as important, there's a lot of responsibility on both sides of the house, and our pay structure, we finally got it to where deputies in, in corrections make the same, corporals in corrections make the same, sergeants make the same, lieutenants make the same, captains make the same, chiefs make the same, all the way up, so it mirrors, all the way from, from the, from the bottom, all the way to the top, it mirrors, and, um, it's important, you know, when, when, when you look at all the responsibilities from the corrections standpoint, TCI, I mean, the book is, you know, crazy, and there's so many hoops you gotta jump through, so many important responsibilities that we have over there with housing the people, uh, we got special needs people, we got people with health issues, we got vomit people, we got people that can't be housed with people, we, we've got a guy over there right now that, that plays in his feces all day, and I'm not talking about the, the rooms painted, and our staff has to deal with that day in and day out. We, uh, from patrol, me, the sheriff, the chief, and half of my staff was out on Short Grill Valley dealing with this guy six months ago, three months prior to that, he come at me at the crowbar and almost shot him. So these are the people we're dealing with on the street, and then they come to the jail, and the, the street gets to do the, gets to do the paperwork, gets them admitted to the jail, and then the jail's responsibility is, is taking care of them, you know, not only from a housing standpoint, but you gotta feed them, we do sick call, I mean, we run a little city in there, uh, we, we, you name it, we do it, we follow a dieticians, um, uh, diet for, for, for inmates based off TCI, you name it, we do it. So, so when I go into the jail side of it, they're as equally as important as the patrol side of it, um, and, 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 um, I truly believe that. So when you look at it, there's two different positions that are different from this side, one of them's a programs director, and she does everything from Dave Ramsey, uh, programs to, to balancing a checkbook, because most people ain't never had to do that before, uh, to GEDs, um, we, there, I can't tell you how many people that's come to the sheriff's office in the jail that's, that has gotten a GED, and, and that's helped them better their life to cut down on the recidivism and, and, and try to change, um, their path. Um, so that, that, that position has so paid for itself, um, and, and there's so little funding from the sheriff's office budget out of the jail goes towards that, a lot of the stuff that she does is from church donations and things like that, so that program's paid for itself tenfold, and, and, and then we got a population manager, and part of that is, is we identified that in one of the jail study meetings, uh, so that, so that we could move people through the system so that somebody didn't get left behind, so that our numbers in the jail wasn't getting crazy, uh, and, and we, we just kept that flow going, and, and, and she's liaison between the courts, the jail, it's just, those are the two positions that's different from my patrol side and the jail side, and, and, um, just wanted to explain a couple of those items.
Where are we at on the stat?
In the jail, you know, and that, that's, that's a good question, because, you know, that thing fluctuate, I might have five quit today because they're just not cut out for it, or something happens, or they get a better paying job, so we, um, hired about five from the prison, because the prison was doing mandatory overtime and, and all this stuff, and then, um, wasn't paying that great, and then all of a sudden, they bumped their pay up to forty-four, five hundred, and give them a five thousand dollar bonus, they all went back to the prison. Some of the people that come to us from the prisons, like, there's too much work here, I can go to the prison, sit on my tail, watch my inmates, and not do near the work, you guys run, I mean, I, I can't tell you how many steps they're doing over there, because they're constantly on the go, doing watch tours, you know, you name it, they're doing it. So, so the work is, is different, but you, you look at it ten years ago, fifteen years ago, the prison probably wasn't paying twenty-eight thousand dollars, and now they're paying forty, almost forty-five thousand dollars. So they seen the need in the prison system, hey, we gotta do something to attract people, it ain't the work that's attracting them, it's the money. Same thing's fixing up my highway patrol, I do not know what's gonna happen from, in, in our line of work, but if the highway patrol gets the pay structure that they're gonna get, they're gonna put us out of business, because their starting pay's gonna be, uh, sixty-two thousand, four hundred dollars a year, that's thirty dollars an hour, and that's just base pay. And if that happens, I don't, you know, we, we've lost one to the highway patrol. Highway patrol would never take you before unless you went through their academy, they're taking people from other states now, they're taking people that's went through the regular state academy, they used to, you all had to go through their academy, that's even changed. So everybody's way of doing business have changed, and they've adapted, because they've had to, they've had to find, you know, like, if you went to work at the Kentucky State Police and didn't like it, you could come here and do a three-week transition course before you had to go through the whole twenty-six weeks, so. So our jail's a hundred and seventy-bed jail, a hundred and thirty males, forty females, beds, I will currently housing today, a hundred and ninety-four people, our average population's been about one ninety-one, a hundred and forty-eight males, forty-three females, since January twenty-twenty-two, we booked, we, uh, had fifty-five hundred bookings, that's a lot of people moving to and from, that, it's, it's, it's a hot place over there, um, we've served about eighty-five hundred and fifty meals, we've served six hundred today, almost. The, the mental health transports is just like patrol, it never stops, um, we've got people, like the guys telling you about that, that spears the feces on the wall, all that stuff, um, they've had to take him to Moxon Bend for a mental evaluation for court purposes and, and stuff like that, so, um, we're running to different jails, just in, in, I call it the network, the circuit, you know, we've gotta go to Anderson County to pick one up, Morgan County to pick one up, Knox County to pick one up, Laven County to pick one up, Monroe County to pick one up, Mex County to pick one up, so I've got a guy that runs the circuit the whole time. Uh, same thing, commonly work eight-hour shifts, jails twenty-four, seven, um, uh, there's thirty-eight folks on the jail side of the budget, ranging from the chief all the way down to the maintenance guy, um, you know, uh, there's a couple of different things that we do from a correctional side, and if you don't know about our inmate work program, um, that Rob Sparks runs, um, he has done so much throughout this entire county for the cities, for the county, for the sheriff's office, I can't tell you how much money that he has saved the taxpayer, uh, at Midway, when he was at Midway, built the greenhouse, and I don't know what that, that saves you, but, but anything you can save in a budget, obviously, is a good thing, and that, that's just one story out of a, a bazillion that, that, that we've done, and then inmate litter crew, when it gets warm, because TCI there again says we can't work inmates until it's certain temperature, so on, so forth, um, we got an inmate litter crew that goes through, and, you know, unfortunately, people throw trash out the window, and, and we get calls, and, and, and the sheriffs, uh, we got a group that goes out and, and does cleanup. Today, we've, like I said, we fed over six hundred meals, we've done sick call, we've done courts, we take people to doctor's appointment, we got pregnant people, uh, we do the mental transports, the inmate housing, you know, we've been sitting at the hospital with people, like, if we have somebody that's incarcerated that can't be released or OR, we have to physically sit around the clock at the hospital with inmate. Uh, I've had, I've had officers, um, go through surgical processes with inmates, I've flown and lifestyle with an inmate, but, you know, there's, it's a required, um, thing whenever you got somebody incarcerated that just can't be turned loose to the general public. We're responsible, make sure that laundry gets done, I mean, it's a whole list of things, food truck, um, doing the programs for the inmates, doing all the mandated checks. That's all I'm gonna say, I'm gonna, I'll answer any question that you guys may have, and, and we do appreciate your all's time, um, and I know, you, you guys have a tough job, because, because you're dealing with the, the financial part, uh, for the county, and, and our job from, from the sheriff's office standpoint is trying to provide the best service and, and, and do, do what we're supposed to be doing.
All right, Sheriff, I'm not counting second.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, so, several of you all were either at Budget Committee last week, can't end up coming to Budget Committee as, as we transitioned from Budget Committee work, and I invited, uh, Sheriff Chief Philip Chief Hahn to come talk to us about what sparked this to become really a crisis, a, a staffing crisis. So can you, one of, one of your books that we speak to, you know, looking at all that we do, and kind of where we are, but looking ahead in the next four to five weeks, what brought this to a point where we all looked around at each other and said, what do you have special call meaning, can you, can you talk to that?
So, you know, um, Rockwood recently raised their pay to almost fifty thousand dollars a year, and, and automatically, we're losing three people, is that for pay, is that for, um, internal departmental issues? You know, who knows? But at the end of the day, Rockwood is paying more than, than we're allowed, that we're capable of paying, and, and, you know, the response, and I'm not taking anything away from the cities, you know, the cities, uh, do a great job, I worked for Hermann for eight years, and their law enforcement's different than our law enforcement, and, and the, the way we're different is they respond to calls for service and wrecks, you know, that's primarily their responsibility, they have investigations like, like we do, but, but we do the courthouse security, we do the school resource officers, we do the calls for service, we got the civil process, we got the criminal process, uh, we got the mental health transports, so we, it's, it's like multiply from, from our standpoint and for what we're responsible for, just statutorily what the sheriff is responsible for, it's, it's different, so, um, when, when I was the assistant chief at Hermann, when I came there to hear, um, I wasn't gray-headed, um, you know, the stress is, the stress is totally different, um, and the impact- Um, and the impact that it has on our people, you know, um, call volume, you know, our folks are running their tails off. The bit they get here, but they might get eaten one day and they might not get eaten. But, but I think everything's gotten to the point where, um, who's paying the most money? Like for example, when Kingston, when I first got in, in, when I went to work for Harriman, Kingston had, um, a better benefits package. Um, so, so you've seen people riding that circuit, whether it's for benefits, whether it's, whether it's for money. And, and, and it kind of slowed down, but now it's picked up, you know, because I think part of, you know, law enforcement on the news, you know, you know, you don't have that many people, in my opinion, uh, wanting to get into this line of work. Because of, of, it's not, it's not the safest job. You know, I, we had, we had deputies shot at, what, six weeks ago? Um, so it's, it's not the safest job in the world. It takes, it takes a lot of guts to, to get out here and be by yourself and, and answer a call in the middle of the night. Where, where you're responding to shots fired call and you're the only guy and your backup's forty-five minutes away. So, you know, people's like, we're doing this for forty-five thousand dollars a year, you know? So that, that, that's what gets the wheel turning for them. And they're like, I'm going to be a janitor at Y twelve right now. What's a janitor make at Y twelve? They don't carry a gun, they carry a broom. Uh, you know, when you, when you guys, when us as citizens call for, if you need help, who do you call? Nine times out of ten, you call law enforcement. So we got to figure out a way and, and, and I don't think there's any way around it. We got to figure out a way to incentivize people. Is it, is it pay? What, what is it? And, um, I, I, I think we're all in agreement, something, something's got to give and.
Chief, when Sheriff came a couple of weeks ago and we were talking about this, we, we were looking at the potential. We were already down eight, eight or nine, depending on where we were deputies. And we had the potential to drop another six or so, based on who was being recruited. Or who was talking to you all about potential leaving, which would take us to nine out of twenty-four, correct?
Depends on when they're going to put that CAS operator job on. We're going to lose, we're going to lose one to that.
And that's what, that's what sparked this conversation, was the potential for us to be at non-functional at that point. Uh, and I just wanted to bring that up, that that, that's what brought us to the room tonight, was the, the potential for that to be our reality.
So there's two outside sources. I've seen one of our detectives, um, in the hallway, uh, on the way over here. And then we, he said, what are you doing? I said, I'm going to go to a meeting over here at the, um, the courthouse. Um, we're talking about pay. He says, man, if you guys get that pay up, he said, I've got two detectives. One from, um, a neighbor, I don't want to call them out, but from some neighboring areas, not in Rome County. From different counties that would come here if the pay, if you guys got, got a good pay raise. And, um, we, we could sure, we could, I think that would help us and we could sure use good qualified people. Um, because if, if we hire, if we hire somebody right now today, we, we got four who would be academy or three?
Three for patrol and one for court.
Got four going to academy, Sunday night. They will not be ready to be by themselves for at least twenty-six weeks.
And we pay for that academy, right?
It's a good question. No. We pay them a salary because we have to, by law. Um, we give them a car, we provide their uniforms, uh, and all that. So all that money that I'm talking about is from pay, um, uniforms, car, gas, maintenance. Um, but Knox County hasn't been charging us anything to send them. They got a grant through Donaldson, which is the state academy that, um, does something similar. So they're trying to cut back some of the costs, you know, uh, when we went through the academy, about six hundred dollars. Uh, it's, you know, it got up to where it's like twenty-eight hundred bucks. Which you start stacking that up and then stacking up what it costs to pay somebody, you know, for twenty-six weeks. And then, you know, them to work no time at all, then leave, you know? It's, we, we've probably spent ten and a half million dollars in the last five years on people that we've trained in the jail. Because they've got to go through, uh, a TCI certified class and there's certain things they got to do. They got to go through an FDO program. So you just can't hire them and, and, and turn them loose. Um, so you've got time and effort, money, um, but yeah, the, the tuition's really not, not a factor.
You were on three eight-hour shifts currently with your staff and you're on twelve?
It just depends. I've got some supervisors that are working sixteen hours. Um, so, uh, we, we're, we're trying to jockey it around to get the best coverage with what we have on patrol. Um, so, so that, that has changed. And, and, you know, when you look at the studies on twelve-hour shifts, I know you guys do them up there at the plant. But, but the, the, the liability goes up because you're, you're, you're not nearly as, as alert. Uh, you get into an eight-hour shift and, and you get into some kind of serious, you know, like Metro had to shoot and kill one today. That, that killed a kid, it's killed some kids and some people in Nashville. And, you know, was he on the beginning of his shift? Was he on towards the end of his shift? You know, you're not nearly as alert, um, in this line of work. You could, you, like, like I'm wiping the sleep out of my eyes trying to get to DeArmond Road six weeks ago. And they're doing the same thing. And we're not nearly alert, but just think about the people that's been there sixteen hours or been there twelve hours. Um, whenever you get somebody to show up, you want them to be squared away and ready to go. You don't want them to be on their sixteenth hour.
I guess my question would be probably monkey in the room, but I, I, I alluded this to the sheriff. So an immediate fix, the biggest problem is patrol right now, to staff patrol, correct? If, I mean, if you had to say and target something, right now we're needing help for patrol to get our patrol numbers up, correct?
So, yeah, patrol, you know, that, that's, that's where we're lacking.
That's the biggest monkey in the room, whatever you want to call it. I guess would be, we're not short of jails, I guess, what you're saying. It fluctuates, son, but.
Yeah, we just, and, and, and I, I know where you're going with it. I, I get it, you know? And what we're trying to prevent is that domino effect, you know? Because we have set that standard where everybody, you know, you got, you got two different sides of the pie. And everybody is equally as important. So we start saying, okay, you're now, you're now not as important as this guy. And I, and I get it, but, but that's how people think. And if, if I pay this person this and, and I pay this person this, well, hell, I'm just going to go to somewhere else.
Mr. Brackett, I had this conversation with Travis Friday too, um, because I feel the same way, you know? In Hamblen County, they have the opposite problem right now in that they can't find jailers because they're leaving to go be officers. And they're, so they're battling that same situation because of unequal pay. Um, and I think it took me a while to get to that place to understand, okay, if you don't, you're going to, it's going to be a seesaw effect. If you don't try to create.
But every day jail on the street, if, if I look at you or you look at me and say, hey, you'll come on. A lot of people don't realize they're not educated, right? So what goes on in the jail? Hey, you going to stay over here inside or you going to go out here, run in the bushes and get shot at? By, you, you see, that's what you hear, that's what we have to hear and answer to when people ask us those questions. And I guess that's, you know, and I've called around some different departments around, surrounding counties and they do have a difference in pay. Jailers, patrol and, and so forth. So I guess, I don't know how we fix what, but I guess the immediate, the immediate thing right now is we need patrol.
You, you're right. And, and there again, like, um, we've talked about it. We just, we don't want to, we don't want to create the domino effect. So if you give, say, say, you say, okay, we're going to bump patrol up to fifty-five thousand. Uh, they're going to end up making more than some of the supervisors, some of the, um, lieutenants, maybe some of the detectives. So then, then that creates another issue. Why, well, why would I want to be a detective, be on call every other week? And, and like Randy Hyatt, talking to him today. He's working a case that took him seventeen hours to process because we're short on the detective side. Um, and, and, you know, when you're calling for detective, you want somebody that's, that's, that's competent to do what they're doing. And, and you, we certainly don't want to go through replacing them because, you know, losing, losing John Mays with the education that he's got and the background that he's got. That, that, that kills us. Um, so, so if we, if we have a, a critical incident, God forbid that, um, we're going to be struggling. You know, um, so, so we, we just don't want to create that, okay, we got this problem, so we're going to address this. And then, you know how people are, well, they give them a raise, they didn't give us a raise. So, so that's why we've came into this situation, trying to figure out the best way to address it. And, um, to keep, um, the ship from teetering this way, back to this way. We're, we're just trying to keep, keep it straight and keep the rudder going.
Who, who's easier to hire, a jailer or a deputy?
Just depends on the day. There's times that we've gotten people that's come off the street, that's, that's interviewed well. Um, that, that we think that's cut out for patrol or we think that's cut out for the jail. It just depends. There's no good answer to that.
But you don't have to go to school to be a jail.
You do, you do have to go to school. So, uh, in order to be a certified correctional officer, you have to go through, um, a course that TCI puts on. It's not as long as the patrol side is, but they still have to do in-service, they still have to do training. They do almost everything other than go to the academy. They go through their forty-hour TCI academy. But they have to have qualification, they have to have a psychological. Everything's pretty much the same, except they don't go through a basic police academy like, uh, they do at, um, um, like Donaldson or Knoxville. But on the other side of that is, we get what's called a salary supplement, um, through the state. It's paid through the state of Tennessee. Uh, it's, it's not, nothing coming from the taxpayer or anything like it. It's a check from the state of Tennessee. Whenever we do our forty hours in-service, they pay us X amount of dollars. It was six hundred dollars for a long time. They recently bumped it up to eight hundred and they're talking about bumping it up to twelve hundred. So that's the incentive for us that are certified law enforcement officers, um, from, from a pay standpoint. They're, they're, they're providing that. Um, and but they're also, the director of TCI is also trying to do something similar. They're, they're trying to bring the standard up on, on both sides to almost mirror each other.
Chief. I, I, I just have a couple of comments.
Sure.
And I have a question also, but the first comment is, I, I'd like to thank Commissioner Hook. Uh, when he opened in prayer, he remembered those children that was killed today. I think that's probably the greatest tragedy any of us will ever deal with. And I'm confident that the first call that was made was made to the police department. I'm sure that the first ones on scene was the police officers. I'm confident that the one to probably gave aid first was police officers. Every one of us in this room, and Ben Wilson's not here today, but we all sympathize with what you do. That's not your jail, Sheriff. That's not your jail. That's the county's. That belongs to the people. You're providing a, a service to the people of Rome County. You're providing a service to the people in our districts. Uh, where you and I are from, we're so rural, we don't have a dollar janitor's rule. So we're rural. Mr. Parks, he's, he's in a rural area. He doesn't have a city. Mr. Henshaw is saying, what, some of, some folks, we, they serve cities, so they do have police protection. In my district, I have a priority and I try to position myself as a commissioner. And it's not a bad thing for me to do this, but I position myself to be on committees that serve my people. One of them is to be on the sheriff liaison committee. The other one is to be on a fire. The other one is to be on a road committee. And there's some priorities that I have in my district. My people need police protection. They need ambulance services. They need fire, police, and they need roads. We need you and, and we want to help. I don't think there's another commissioner in this room tonight that doesn't sympathize with what you're trying to do. And I even in some way apologize and feel sorry that you had to take time to create a slide and stand there and try to present that to us. This isn't your problem. You can quit today. You can really quit. And the problem still, I figure it ain't your problem. It ain't Sheriff Stockton's problem. It ain't Mr. Hunt's problem. It ain't your all's problem. Use your compassion about it because you choose to serve the people of, of Rome County. But it's our problem. It's the executive's problem. It's the commissioner's problem. If you're gone tomorrow, problems still will not be solved. I don't know if rogue money at the problem always fixes it. I don't know that. But I don't know of another fix for that by now. I honestly don't know of another fix. We talked about benefits. I understand the insurance is high, believe me. I understand the insurance and the benefits are not the best in the world. But my comments lead to this, Chief. We appreciate you and every one of you that wear that uniform and put that badge on. I respect you. I thank you. I thank you that you're willing to stand here for your officers and the people that work for you. But you're standing here today for the citizens of Rome County, so you're standing for it. And that's our, and I thank you very much. And I appreciate everything that you guys do. You can go to Chick-fil-A and make the, almost about the same amount of money and not have to deal with the worst of Rome County. See, we don't deal with the worst of Rome County. We don't see the worst of Rome County. If I was to see some of the things that you all see, I'd probably move to another county. So I admire and I appreciate everything and every commissioner here would have to say the same thing. We admire you and we appreciate you. So that was my comments, but my question is this. Do we utilize reserve officers?
Good question.
And, and the reason I ask that is because reserve officers can serve certain papers and they can do some certain duties. So, and I know that some counties do utilize reserve officers. So I don't know if you do, if you don't, why you, why you don't.
And that's, that's a great question. And, and the only way that you can be a reserve officer for the Rome County Sheriff's Office, because we're looking at liability. You know, we have to go through training every year. We have to, we have to jump through all those hoops and you don't want to get somebody that's not been through that type of training out here, representing themselves as a law enforcement officer, not able to give the same kind of services. But the Tennessee Post Commission governs that as well. So all the people that act as a part-time or a reserve status for patrol division have been through the academy. They have been through the police academy. They keep up their in-service. So that is the only way and that protects all of us. Because if I get somebody out there that, that doesn't have any experience in law enforcement, I turn them loose, have them serving papers, get them killed. Or they get themselves killed or whatever the case may be. It's a liability on, on, on the sheriff's office. We don't do ride-alongs. Um, if, you know, for the county commission and the, the mayor rode, rode along, um, this past week. We had a ride-along killed in those six. Um, and, and there was liability on the county. Mike remembers that. Um, and, and so it's, it's just a good idea to keep it the way that we're doing it. For insurance purposes, Johnny Griffin would pass out if I put somebody in a patrol car that wasn't a certified officer because it puts liability on the insurance. I mean, some, some departments do it. Um, you know, I've worked for the sheriff almost twenty-five years and even at Harriman, unless you've been to the police academy, we didn't do it. So it's, it's just that better practice and, and you get what you pay for. You know, my people are part-time. If something really bad happens, I can call them and depend on them. But you don't want them doing that out there, dating, every day. Do you have a question, Mike?
I just want to make a comment, uh, and, and there's two posts to this. The sheriff is responsible to run a jail, to house inmates, and then you have your law enforcement aspect of this. And, and I would like to talk about the law enforcement aspect. I spent my life as a public servant. I'm a retired police officer. I retired from nine-one-one. When I started, things weren't, I thought they were bad. Nothing like they are today. When you have one major incident out there, you call in. And I, I was an investigator for years. When you having to bring all your investigators to work on a homicide, did every report that an officer has taken that day, the day after that, until that homicide is cleared up? all of the burglaries, all of the, uh, child sex abuse cases, everything else goes, goes on a whole. I know that sounds bad, but that homicide has to be solved, and you only have a few hours to solve it or it probably will never be solved. So, then they come back, and I'm, I'm, I'm saying this to make a point. Then they come back to their office and you see a stack of papers this high on their desk that all the patrol officers that are already overworked have went out and taken reports from a dog bite, uh, to auto theft to a burglary. And they have to try to weed that down, and they, the lights blinking on the old phone. They've got so many messages. When you call their, their, their line, mailbox is full, and they go to try and return all of those calls. It's a domino effect. So, I'm gonna see how you can, I wouldn't work in that conditions. Then you got the news media that is hopefully not Rome County, but surrounding counties and, and, and the state. Now, we got true news set back there. I know. But they're against us. And I'm against people that don't do their job. Don't get me wrong. But they're against. Who would put their name on the dotted line to work for twenty-eight thousand dollars a year? That's required to be educated. When you can go to Taco Bell and make fifteen, seventeen bucks an hour with no education, some of them can, doesn't have enough education. If the machines stem, they can't count you the change back. It causes a domino effect. So, you have to fix the problem. And we have kicked this camp out of the road since nineteen and ninety-eight.
All right, Sheriff recognizes any other commissioners, junior hitters?
Chief, uh, how many more officers of this nose older than the passes do you think you'd like to add out? You run out across the county when somebody calls?
I have no idea. I've never even thought about that. That's not something that, that we've thought about.
Might want to keep in your back pocket.
Any other, Mr. Kirby?
Mr. Kirby.
Chief, we was talking about those figures, you know, you was talking about somebody coming in, making this dollar amount, and this guy's been here this long, ten, fifteen-year veteran. So, look at these figures. Is that gonna, so I'm assuming that's gonna be the rig, because I feel exactly like you. I mean, even on the fire side, I've been doing this thirty-six years, and I've seen, I've seen the same thing. I've seen people hired in, no experience, and making what a five or ten-year firefighter's been making is, is got his certification and education. Um, I'm totally against it. I think it ought to be done in, in a deeper frame. So, that's the plan for this, I, I assume.
Yeah, so everything that, that, um, what, what I put together and I, I submitted that on a spreadsheet to Connie, but I, I've got an old-school way of, of doing it, and basically, this is my spreadsheet. I've got that spreadsheet, but, you know, I look at their base pay, then look at, you know, the years of service. Like, for example, Lieutenant Anderson's been here twenty-nine years. You know, I've got, I've got two lieutenants, and they make the same. Um, one's, one's been here like three years, one's been here twenty-nine years. They make the same money. So, so that, that's, that's the whole reasoning behind that. Bob Childs has been here twenty years.
You gotta take care of the medical. It's been loyal to you.
All right, Mr. Kirby.
Chief, I'd like for y'all to look at some too. If, if y'all get this money, say Harriman, Kingston, too much now, we're, we're gonna be right back over there. I, I'd like to see us look at some kind of benefit package too, to help them. If that does happen, to kind of weigh things out. I just don't like to give them competition where every two or three months, we'll compete with another city, and it can help. And I just wish y'all would look at that.
And, and that's, that's a, that's a good comment, and, and, you know, I think anything in the direction of putting more money in, um, the employee's pocket, whether it's, you know, changing the benefit package, a raise, or, or whatever that, you know, I think it's a win, because, you know, what's the most important part of your organization? Your people.
When you're young, you look fun. But when you get older, like working.
You look at the benefits.
You, you look at the dollar on benefits. The benefits outweigh money.
But our, and that's, that's a good point. Our average years of experience right now is two and a half years on patrol. So, we, we have a lot of you, um...
That's my, just county, because the sheriff's my life, where I'm doing some kind of package that holds county employees' government. It looks for some kind of package. It's letting me or somebody who wants to look at this and see, we can get some kind of good package for everybody. But, uh, the money is, is good, what y'all doing. But two months, like I say, two months from now, we might be competing with Kingston City where they break their offer, but it's more, then we're all gonna be right back in here again. We got to get something in stone. I don't know what it is. We need to get something in town.
Sheriff recognizes Connie, there.
Two points there. Mr. Kirby, I, I could have driven you more, and the way around that is, is communicate. At a time before we get into situations where we make any, uh, any decisions that impact the other departments without having to communicate. And unfortunately, that's where we find ourselves in this situation. So, we have been in touch with Harriman and Kingston in this situation to, uh, uh, to let them know what our situation invited them to come tonight, and in fact, uh, Mr. Mason from Harriman was here a little while ago. But I invited Mr. Best and Mr. Neal, Mr. Bowling Figure as well, uh, to let them know that their intent is not to try, again, try to take, um, other officers in this situation, so they're not competing with each other, and it never solves the problem. So... But then I also wanted to point out on the chief's comment there, you know, it's my, I think it's already escaped me. I, we were on a point, what was the point we were making right before Ms. Kirby's question? Uh, I could have had something that we had talked about that, uh, built on, um...
Years of service. Years of service, or?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, that was it. That's where I meant to spark them either. In this proposal, not just, um, this proposal here, but FY twenty-four, because this is basically the same proposal that is in the FY twenty-four budget for the sheriff's office and the jail. Um, when I first met with Chief Phillips, six weeks ago probably, I encouraged him to look at the pay structure, to eliminate exactly what we're talking about, about three-year lieutenant and a twenty-nine-year lieutenant making the same thing. Start at the top and break your way down so that we're not, um, just applying a Band-Aid fix at the bottom level for entry-level officers. That the whole point here, more than recruitment, is retention. And the sheriff and I have talked about this. If we hold on to our best people, we're able to solve our biggest problem. We lose people who just, who have to leave to go to somewhere else because they can't turn it down, then we're, we're in a bad spot. So, this proposal that you have for you from the sheriff does address that very thing, right? We have, we have addressed the pay structure, so we don't end up in those situations. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, everything, yeah, so everything we've put together, submitted.
All right, Sheriff recognizes Mr. Bird.
So, we, we did, we did thirty-nine to forty-four last year.
Yeah.
So, so we did, we did what? Fifteen percent raise, and, and we still haven't paid for that. That's, that's out, that's out of ARC money.
We have, but two hundred and thirty-five thousand to go next year as well.
So, so is that, is, is, is that in our budget anywhere?
Well, I mean, it's in their salaries.
Thirty-nine, but we'd be going from thirty-nine to fifty-five.
Where you have that in the budget. We have it set aside in a reserve. It's all gonna affect fund balance. But what we do is we move two hundred and thirty-five thousand out of a restricted to be put into the unassigned fund balance. The cash is already in there.
Less than a year ago, we sat here. We tried to make sure we, we, we were doing exactly what we're talking about. Tonight, we wanted to get on, we wanted to get on the raise. We were told that if we could go to forty-four, that would help our situation. So...
And, and you, you know, you guys did do that, you know?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We were told to go to forty-four, would, would, would help solve our situation, and we did it. We used, we used ARC money just, just for the, for the sheriff and for, uh, the M.P.s. The alms, so, so we did it, right? Next year, next year, we do the same thing, going to forty, up to forty-four. So, anything over forty-four is new money for, for us next year.
Correct.
So, from forty-four to fifty-five, or whatever we're doing, is, is, is that. And what, what additional benefits can we offer? We had a personnel committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we added, we added some, not just, yeah, the whole, the whole county's benefits. We, we're paying ninety-five percent of our employee health insurance. And, and, and my guess is that's probably higher than most counties pay for employees.
You know, um, the, the, the single employee, um, benefits are, are really good. You're right. You know, paying five percent on the, I'm on the single plan.
And that's probably higher than most.
But I, I think part of, part of the thing that we're having is, say you have a, a, a deputy that makes forty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars a year, and they've got family coverage insurance for them, a, a spouse, uh, and a child.
Right.
Seven hundred and twenty dollars a month, just for insurance. You know, once you, once you take out the insurance, take out the federal income tax, and that's where the sheriff comes up, we come up with that twenty-eight thousand dollar number. It's, it's, it's hard for, for a deputy that, that requires to have that kind of insurance to be able to make ends.
What are any counties paying on health insurance?
I think, uh, you know, Morton County, the, the law officer that, that we were, um, looking at hiring several months back, that was gonna be a school resource officer, I think he was paying two hundred and fifty dollars.
How much is the county paying for, for his family coverage?
Uh, it's one fifty or two fifty.
One fifty a month.
But, but he cho, he chose not to come to us.
Well, what I'm saying is, we need to find out what, what these other counties are doing, because that's obviously the biggest benefit is, is health insurance. That's why we, we choose to do the ninety-five. We need to do something else that other counties are doing. If they're paying, I think we're paying, uh, ours is eighty-twenty, I think, on, on, on the, on the family. And maybe, maybe there's something out there from, from that standpoint, or, or any other benefit. We, we need to do something to our benefit package.
The family insurance will, will, will definitely help. When I worked for the city of Harriman, my insurance was very...
So, so let's, you know, let's, let's look at, let's look at the benefit packages.
We have, we have, and we are. We've been running numbers all day on that. What county could contribute towards family coverage and plus-one coverage, even individual?
I'm not sure that we could, we can't pick and choose it. What, whatever that benefit is has to go to every county employee. We can't, we can't, we can't have.
That's what we planned for, for this group.
That's what we're gonna do. For that group, but, but, but we could, we could sort of look at, look at that and, and any other benefits if, if the benefit package is not where we need it to be. And, and I guess, uh, you know, the, we, we say we've got three new patrol officers going to the academy. So, when they, when they get back from the academy, they'll be making more. They'll be making more than, than, than some of the old officers were making before this. They don't start, they wouldn't be starting at forty, at forty-four, seven, twenty-two.
When they get back, they'll be, they'll, they'll make forty-four, seven, twenty-two.
That's what I'm saying. They would be starting out at forty-four, seven, twenty-two, when, when, just a year ago, we were paying thirty-nine. So, so, and, and, and we're not getting trained, and we're having to train them. So, so that's, you know, that's the other thing. And it looks like from your, from your handout, like, uh, like you're doing, the chief would go from seventy-nine to ninety-two, uh, forty...
That's what, that's what the longevity pay, uh, the years of service. So, that's...
Sixty-three is annual and twenty-four annual.
But she's got the numbers put into that spreadsheet with everybody's years of service. So, I would make more than him, because I've been here longer, from a chief standpoint.
So, so, so what is this sheet now?
That's, that's your worksheet and what you submitted to have. It's, it's roughly...
This is built in with the longevity, one percent for every year of service, um, for everybody, um...
Okay, so you're, you're actually, you're actually not giving us just the, the forty, the fifty-five. You're giving us the longevity.
That's, yeah, that's what this has. It has longevity.
Because here's, here's something to go from, okay, so, so forty-four to fifty-seven. Okay, so that's all the longevity numbers there.
Yeah, first place, fifty-four, it says fifty-four, one-ten jail guards. That's not jail guards.
What, it's jail.
It's patrol, it's some type of patrol, but, um... But, yeah, all that's built in, in the one spreadsheet that, um, has names on it, which obviously listen, don't have names, right?
So, we have one deputy go from forty-four to sixty-three, ninety. So, he's been here a while.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's why, yeah, okay, that's why you're doing it. Okay, with those. Okay, so, and I guess, I'm budget director or somebody, uh, we're saying that in twenty-three, we ended up with twenty-four, one fifty-five, four seventy-nine on our, on our general fund. That's the number you, I think the number you got.
Say it again.
Like, like you said, a year ending in twenty-three, we ended at twenty-four, one fifty-five, four seventy-nine. And, um, we amended it to twenty-five, oh, forty-three, six thirty-five.
Yes.
And so, we were dropping, we were dropping what? Uh, from fifty-three percent to...
Forty-six.
Forty-six percent. So, we dropped seven percent in the, in the, in the...
With the added money back.
Okay, so, so what, if, if, if we're doing that, what, what are we looking at for other county employees?
We're still projecting in this budget, five percent salary increase.
Of course. So, and then does that, does that give us the ending balance that, that we're projecting up here with that five percent included in the end?
Oh, this is, that's, that, we haven't even mentioned that number yet.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm saying, is so we, we got...
We're not getting forty yet.
Okay. We're working on it right now, right?
But it might be the segue we needed to get us talking about that situation.
Okay, so, and, and these numbers, these numbers are just for, for the sheriff's office. This, this doesn't include anything.
Exactly, which is why I said, remember the big picture when we're talking about it.
Mr. Bird, anything else?
Well, I'm just, just looking at this new sheet here.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Before we study that, uh, all right, Sheriff recognizes Mr. Bird.
Doing some calculations, I, I was wondering, so the longevity pay year twenty-four, that, that's where this all catches up, right?
Yeah, so the budget I put together is for this upcoming year.
This upcoming year. And that's why I was looking, you know, something fifteen percent, twenty-six percent, you know? Now, I was wondering what was the...
It's the problem longevity, yeah.
Thirty percent, something up to, right around forty. So, that's what I was trying to figure out. I couldn't in my mind figure out what it was, but, so years of service.
So, like, like, like Lieutenant Anderson's been here twenty-nine years. He would make twenty-nine percent more than another lieutenant, like, that's brand-new, or, you know?
Based on that one percent longevity, catching up off that one time and then...
Mr. Frank, were you referring to this form right here?
Yeah, I was looking at the, from twenty-three to twenty-four, and I was just trying to figure out.
But there's also a June thirtieth line on that too, and that's this year.
Right, right, right.
All right, Sheriff recognizes the county executive. So, the stretch cards are on one-on-one, uh, fifty-four, one-ten. Are you gonna cover that in our agenda here for the item, was it three or four?
Yes, sir. This, uh, this cook just passed out a, a worksheet to walk you through, our current situation. So, so, label at the top says seventy-four pennies. So, the overall tax rate's two forty. Seventy-four cents of that two forty is assigned to the general fund. That's what that means. So, if we presume that we're gonna keep seventy-four cents there, then the following numbers are true to that scenario. Does that make sense to everybody? Because we're gonna have a couple more scenarios coming up to paint a different picture. All right? Connie will walk us through them.
Okay, so, look at your middle section. Midway, there's a highlighted... Midway, there's a highlighted nine hundred thousand dollars. What we currently have is our investments income goes directly into one fifty-one. And that's for the cash balances, for the general fund, for the high, ambulance, for the high, uh, highway. There's several small revenues that go in there. Currently, our general debt service fund is in the best shape that it could ever be. We could take the cash revenue sources that we have being put in there and stop for two years, and we could still make our debt payments. Last year, you remember, we talked about this year, we approved the million dollars to go into the general debt. I believe if Ron knew we were gonna be facing this crisis, we would not have transferred that million dollars. So, what we're looking at is, also with our trustees investing our investments, we've earned quite a bit of money this year. So, what I'm proposing is, because of the general debt service fund is in such great shape, let's take that nine hundred thousand for this year. We've not transferred it and moved it, you can still change the appropriation resolution next month to move all that investment and put it into the general fund. All it takes is your vote to change the resolution and move from one fifty-one into one-on-one. That helps for the short term to fix the problem at June, if you all approve what the sheriff has proposed.
When you say a short-term business?
That's from today until June.
Thirty, and that nine hundred thousand?
Yeah, right.
No, well, the nine hundred, and we're estimating roughly four fifty to five hundred thousand to fix from today until June. So, we'll still have a four hundred thousand dollar increase with just investment income at June thirtieth.
And that would, so, if approved at the next, uh, commission meeting, a week, two weeks from now, uh, that would mean that the beginning of the next pay period, this would go into effect using the money Connie's just identified in one fifty-one. So, if you moved over that amount of money from one fifty-one to one-on-one, then we'd be able to fund this through June thirtieth. And then, it would become, with this, what you decide here, would then become the sheriff and jail budget for FY twenty-four. So, you'd basically be approving the FY twenty-four budget for the sheriff and the jail seven pay periods early.
I, I guess my question is, who can tell me when I look at the tax person? And I'm, I'm for the guys, don't give them a run, but in pennies, are we looking at a tax rate, I mean, bottom line?
Or, or still, or whatever.
So, that, that is current status. Now, now, there's another, uh, Connie sent this out. If you'll see this at the bottom, if we did that with no other changes, that would mean that next year, we would have to spend two point eight million dollars in fund balance to balance the budget. That's why I brought up all that stuff at the first, because that's a good lick in fund balance.
What's in our fund balance?
Um, at the end of this year, we are projecting, make sure I'm looking at the right one, I'm cross-eyed. Twelve million, four hundred and fifty-one dollars is the beginning fund balance. Now, that was the beginning fund balance at the end of, of this year.
Yeah, that's what, we're projecting twelve million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty to hit June.
That was beginning, so in this scenario, Dave, or Mr. Bell is right.
That, that said July, forty, twenty-three.
Yeah.
You're looking, you wanna know if we approve this budget for next year, what our fund balance will be?
It would be nine million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars in this scenario, which would be, um.
A little bit, two point, almost two point nine million.
Two point, almost two point nine million, after subtract fund balance to balance the budget. That was the first scenario. So, the second scenario, which one did you send it?
Eighty.
Six cents, okay.
That gets us to June, everything you're talking about gets us to June of this year.
Yes.
Yep, okay, so.
All right, so, next one, you're looking at eighty pennies? The one that has eighty penny at the top. This is presuming we would reappropriate some of the, uh, revenue that we received. Six cents in revenue from debt service to one-on-one. So, instead of contributing thirteen cents?
So, it's thirteen cents, it fell off the tab, we came back, we totaled seven.
Seven, right.
So, you're gonna take that six cents and put it in debt service.
All right, so you had, you had two debt services. So, you're looking at two, you still have thirteen pennies going into one fifty-one. And then, your rural debt, education debt service is what you took off the roll of seven pennies and left six on. Now, in twenty twenty-five, six pennies become available. We will not need that for the general debt service fund, until we need a jail and schools. So, that's still on the back burner, that money will have to be raised for that. But what I'm proposing, and we, it's, sorry, um, is that let's not wait one more year to move that six pennies. Move the six pennies in twenty-three, twenty-four. That way, that'll bring in an additional eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the general fund. That is no tax increase, right now, per se. You can move, you can kick the can down the road, but that'll get you about two years before you'll have to add a, uh, tax increase of fourteen pennies.
How much, how much is a penny worth today?
Right now, uh, I just got the numbers off the press, and at a hundred percent, they are at one forty-nine, eight seventy-two.
Current, current and next year?
Not, it's, it's, well, he's wanting to know what the value is.
Yeah, because we usually, we've got, you hear you've got the value of a penny at one forty-one, four oh five.
Well, that was.
One forty-six in the nonprofit, now we're at one forty-nine.
No, we were at one forty-six when we appropriated this fiscal year.
Okay, one forty-six, okay.
When I went to one forty-one, we had some news that the Oak Ridge, um, depreciation off of their supercomputers was gonna drop it down to only three hundred and eighty-three thousand. So, we do not have all of the numbers that we need for new constructions and fully depreciating.
But if you, if you use, if you use one forty-nine on this, on this illustration, how does it change the number?
It'll change it about, you're gonna take maybe a few hundred, but we're, I'm still.
Few hundred plus.
But that one forty-one number, Ron, it, that, that's a ninety-five percent, that's not a hundred percent.
Okay, but I'm just saying, if, if we, if we're at one forty-nine now, that we're using one forty-one numbers to, on these calculations, how, how, how does that?
That, that's gonna change a couple of hundred thousand. It, it's gonna be minimal on some areas, but just follow me along just for a minute, and I'll bring you to the end of this.
We have another scenario.
All right, so, you know, we were looking at maybe a hundred and forty-one that gave eleven million, three hundred and two thousand, four hundred for current property tax. All right, so, if we take, where is my, which, this one? All right.
That one forty-one, four oh five is ninety-five, that is not a gross.
No.
Penny, that is a net penny.
What you're looking at, this is what we call our, uh, the assessments and our taxes receivable, and what we project is gonna be our property tax for next year. This is if we move six pennies out of the general debt service fund and only leave seven pennies there. One fifty-one takes ahead of roughly about eight hundred and fifty. That brings up one million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars more revenue into the general fund. If you look underneath that ninety-five percent column, that is the variance of what we have budgeted this year against what we have potentials of receiving next year. Now, go with me a little bit further and look at your general purpose school fund.
Now, can I stop you for a second? The, the six cents out of that debt fund that you're talking about, what was that going towards?
That is. The six cents in the debt service, what, it was going just to pay for the debt. It just, we have not pulled off any, if we paid off a debt, maybe it'd been twenty-five thousand or twenty-five million, we have not pulled off pennies from the general debt service fund.
Because the, because the fund balance in one fifty-one is at two hundred percent, we don't have to put as much revenue into that fund as necessary to continue to make our debt payments. So, we can afford to take six cents out of there, put it to one-on-one instead of moving forward, uh, and still make our debt payments.
So, we basically, we basically given more than six cents back to the taxpayers, knowing that that debt service was gonna have nine hundred thousand dollars in it today.
That's the most cardinal rule you really don't wanna do if you.
I'm just saying.
I know what you were saying.
We're using nine hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money.
Well, and also, we put in a million dollars, so that kinda evened up. But what you, we also have to look in the future for is, when we have this debt, we still have buildings to take care of, and we still have buildings that need to be built. So, you always want to look out for your capital, cost of vehicles are going up. You know, the sheriff, it, it's taken almost over four hundred thousand just to, to equip them, and you're required to equip them with that. So, we always wanna keep in mind our capital.
So, whether we wanna take nine hundred thousand dollars out of the interest money and put it somewhere else with all of the things that you just mentioned, and, and, and really haven't even considered yet EMS people and, and, and.
We, we have considered those when we're working on those.
It's very, uh, we're looking for options in alternative solutions.
Right.
And, uh, one of my directives to, to Connie and Jennifer has been to try to find solutions. Where, where are the funds where we're, we're in very good position? How are we funding those funds? Can we reposition how we, how we fund those and move it to the general fund? And this was one of the areas that we've been trying to do that, simply because we have two hundred percent fund balance in one fifty-one. That can't, it won't stay that way if we fund it at a lower rate, obviously. That's where we come to there. And then, so her last question, though, is very important for you guys, is looking at general purpose schools. This is, have, have you handed up eighty-three pennies yet?
No, I haven't moved the three penny yet, I haven't given them the worksheet.
I, I wanted to ask about, there was, I think it was the six pennies set aside for the schools, correct? Or was it three pennies that were set aside for the schools? How much was set aside?
You have a total, there is one dollar and five cents that's for the schools.
I'm talking about that was, that came off of debt service rather than?
That was three, that was moved over.
You're not, you're not discussing that in, in the six pennies that you're talking about, correct?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Just, yes.
Um, all right, so, the total increase that you're talking about, for five percent for everyone, and then the?
Yes.
How much, what dollar amount is that?
Okay, so, our total budget that has been requested, on that lower part of it, is twenty-six million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty roughly.
And, and that is an increase versus last year?
That, yeah, that is the.
What, the amended budget currently for Mr. Duff is twenty-five million, forty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars.
If we did not use fund balance, how much money are we talking about? If we left fund balance alone, what is the increase?
Okay, you're still, there's no way, you would have to bring revenue up over four million dollars for it to be no increase and no effects on fund balance.
And so, there is an increase of four million dollars from last year to this year with the increases that we are discussing? Is that, is that proposed?
Part of it, now, there has been over a million dollars with, if you're gonna count the nine hundred thousand with the investment, we had opiate money, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, that's in current revenue, but that's gonna have to be spent next year or the year after that, plus we're getting more funding. So, we have some anomalies that are in there that have not yet been addressed as far as when we're gonna spend it. So, it's either in the beginning fund balance, or it's in the expenditures.
But, Mr. Duff, that's, that's not a, it's not four million dollars, it's, it's, it's one point six two something.
But we had to fund some of that out of fund balance.
Yes, absolutely.
So, I'm saying that you do not have to touch, we didn't touch fund balance.
What would it take, and is it a tax increase?
Yes, sir.
Well, yeah, we didn't touch fund balance at one point six million divided by a hundred and forty.
I thought it was two point five million that would make the fallout out of the fund.
That was your fallout.
Well.
We had nine, we had twenty-five million, nineteen point three in revenue, and then the fund balance is two point five million.
Well, that, what we're doing in that is we're including a fallout. So, we take what we total budget, and then we estimate about a ten percent fallout, so we take about half.
So, two million divided by the one forty-nine, half, roughly.
I got one point.
One point.
Okay, so, you're looking, if we do not spend, this is what they're looking at.
Two million, eleven thousand, thirty-four, she's got there fourteen cents.
So, as, as the S M V's, what do you suggest we do?
Well, this still, this, there's still another piece of this. All right, so, when I asked you to look at the schools, last year, we gave them a budget of thirteen million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, which included the three pennies for their capital. They have that maintenance of effort. If we continue to allow them to grow in tax pennies or property tax, we have to maintain that. What they have is a local option sales tax that is under budget, about a million dollars. And that's what saves them from having their maintenance of effort relying on the sales tax. Because if they budgeted a hundred percent on the sales tax, and that plummets, then we have to increase their property tax, because they have to maintain that maintenance of effort.
Does that maintenance of effort change under the new funding proposal for next year under TISH?
No.
What that means, though, is, if sales tax increases, you do not have to provide the same level of property tax. So, you can take pennies, property tax, from general purpose school fund, move it to one-on-one. And that's what Connie's talking about.
Their funding is next year, dude.
No, not at the moment.
All we know is what we have to provide, level, make it better. So, we know the sales tax is up eighteen percent year-over-year.
But for the schools, they're only up about five percent. Our rules is up eighteen percent, and those are in two funds of one sixteen and one twenty-one. They need that currently, because of what has happened with the disposal fees. They, and animal control needs and fire needs their budget.
We still have a quarter of a percent of sales tax that we could actually go to the referendum on.
If you wanted to give revenue in that manner, yes, you could increase that.
You can send it to the school.
Yes, they would get, have, they automatically get fifty percent of sales tax. The cities get their sales tax, and then we rely on the rules.
So, but what I ask you is, I'm sure every commissioner in here understands this, and unfortunately, I don't.
No, but that's why I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I, I don't follow this, I, I really don't. You stay awake at night and think about this, this is what you love doing. I think about cows, and you think about this. So, what do you, what do you suggest we do?
I mean, you, you have more knowledge of this than anybody in this room, I'm confident, more than the executive. He's gonna count on you just like we are.
Okay.
What would you suggest we do, Connie?
Like we always do, I only have a solution to put a Band-Aid fix on this, and it'll give you a couple of years. What you do is go with what we suggested, move the six pennies over one year early from the general. What you do is go with what we suggested, move the six pennies over one year early from the general debt service fund. Allow that resolution to change to put the debt service investments into the general, or general fund. And then only allow the G P S to stay at the constant of what we had last year. Uh, general purpose school funds, one forty-one. Don't give them that increase. We gave them the three pennies. As long as they get thirteen million, three hundred and eighty-three and above, I mean, we're gonna give them about maybe thirty to forty thousand more. But give that growth to the general fund and to our shares.
Where does the school, where do the schools get their, where do they make their debt?
Multiple option sales tax. Right now, their budget, they budget about a million dollars less than what they actually pay. So where they budget eight million, they're probably gonna get nine million. So just to keep that maintenance of effort down, we don't fluctuate that. We let it stay. So you, you stay with the maintenance of effort by keeping thirteen million. That gives us a little room to make it about two years out when you start thinking about.
Without a sales tax.
Yeah, without a.
Without.
Tax tax.
With that.
You have another docket or another package you're gonna hand up.
We're gonna.
We're hitting on two hours of this. I know we can, we can go as long as we want or as long as we need, but, uh, I've got a lot to digest over these pennies and, uh.
So, Mr. Sheriff? So, so Sheriff, we, we've gone from thirty-nine, forty-four, fifty-five.
What, I mean, it's not about ninety, what, what, what do you see happening here that, I mean, we've done this a year or two?
We know that inflation rate is something we can't control. Uh, and most of the law enforcement officers are working as the owner provider of the family. And those that have lives that have big jobs, like Chief and, and myself are fortunate. Uh, but if you pay these officers under fifty thousand dollars, you're gonna be a low quality officer. And we're trying to keep the professional level to the greatest extent for the last sixteen years.
So what happens though if, if, if Harriman comes in and they go to fifty-eight thousand?
Harriman can't afford fifty-eight thousand.
Well, Rockwood can afford fifty.
Know what your taxes are gonna be in the race.
I, I think, I think that instead of bidding moral wages, I think what the men, uh, and the women that work for us feel like, and I'm, I hope I'm speaking broad law. They just feel like that they're always at the bottom of the list. They're worse than a garbage collector, and I don't know anything bad about that. But these guys put their life on the line every single day when they come to work. They're different than most professional people that go to work. They have psychological before they've been a gun and badge on. They have a physical, they have a drug screening. They have to go through all these stills and training day in, day out, because their lives and our, and our lives are in danger. So I don't, won't Johnny go come lately to be the guy that stand beside me when they're to shootout. I want somebody that's efficient to do the job and not have to pay over that service. If you don't, you're gonna end up at forty-five and then you.
So can we, can we do something, can we do something to keep the officers that, from county to Rockwood, from coming back to the county if, if the county raises.
Here's one, I'll tell you, Sheriff, one thing to do. I don't know what the next sheriff do for the next three years. People that have left me to go to Rockwood, Harriman, or wherever they may have went, are not coming back to my place. 'Cause obviously they didn't want to be there anyway. The bottom line is that who's at the top of the line comes to law enforcement. No offense to Rockwood, no offense to Kingston Police Department or Harriman, 'cause I've worked at all of them. Rome County Sheriff's Office provides more professionalism than all of us combined, and they serve the public at a greater skill level, and put more training and education than any agency in this county. So why don't you pay the people for the quality of service that they provide?
Um, I, I agree with everything that's been, that's been said. The only, the only concern that I have is now we, we, we started, we started a, uh, a bidding war for, for, you know, for law enforcement folks in Rome County in terms of who's paying the most. And it looks like, and that's why I, I, I was asking about the benefit package. If we can do something benefit wise, somebody else has done, and then that gives us a lack of other lives, it seems like it's just a carousel of who's paying the most money.
And I do agree with that. I think that that would be an attractive way to keep people here. The, uh, you know, the insurance package for sure, longevity is something we need to talk about. Uh, competitive way, I'm not saying jump up sixty-three thousand for a patrol, but on the other hand, if we have a base salary and that person's on probation for a year or, or don't cut, cut the mushroom, you know, can't make it through the category, we're not paying them the quality pay that officers are certified to be in the law. I mean, just because we say that they start at fifty-five thousand, doesn't mean that when they get hired at the sheriff's office, I'm gonna pay them fifty-five thousand.
I mean, if you, if you say the highway patrol's one sixty-four or something like that, we're, we're, we're right behind, we're right behind the highway patrol. Actually, they're starting out, they're five years and almost ninety thousand dollars. But, but I'm saying from, from, from the start at bay and, and, you know, Rome County versus the state of Tennessee is, is a lot of differences. I, I, I'm just concerned that we started a carousel of, of, of who's, who's gonna pay the most money for law enforcement.
I think the county should be the top.
I am.
Uh, and Rockwood's leading that, that game right now. It's kinda like professional sports. You get the best player, you win championships if they work as a team. We are the leaders in law enforcement in this county, and we provide protection for law enforcement that don't have enough people to work on.
We're working.
And we can provide that service if we're given the funding to do that. And, and that's what we're here about, is to try and get quality people that stay with us and provide protection for everyone living in the county and the cities. Uh, we have Kingston on investigations. Uh, now we're gonna rely on this, because we don't have to take it. Uh, we lost, just like John Mays, we probably lost an officer that we had a hundred thousand dollars invested in, in training, education, background, plus his experience at every place. You can't get a, a patrolman, I don't have one patrolman that works for me that qualifies to be a detective.
This give, this give us a better, uh, some better handle on, because that, the thing that we get hit with all the time is it's gonna give us a better handle on drugs.
I would hope so. As long as our borders are open, we're not gonna be able to do a whole lot of that.
But I'm just saying that, with county people, that's, that's one thing with law.
Yes, I, I think that.
Our hands are tied.
You know, now we can barely answer calls. We are, wanna start prioritizing calls, and we take homicides, shootings, officer involved shootings, all those are taking priority over other things, and we're gonna have to go to that schedule if we don't get some help.
And I know that where I live, I, I, I can't defend, you know, I'm, I'm thirty or forty minutes. If you've got twenty-five patrolmen, where I live, ambulance, I, when I moved there, I knew that I wasn't gonna have ambulance. And I do know I wasn't gonna have a sheriff. Again, just because of, of where you are. And it doesn't matter, this isn't gonna help that situation.
We'll have the same amount of people.
Okay.
Y'all are coming and asking for new people. If, if I did go a different route, I probably could get more people, but I wouldn't be able to pay them fifty-seven thousand dollars a year, obviously. But more people at this point in time is not what I'm asking for. I would love to have more people, because I obviously don't have enough for the square miles that we patrol. But I think keeping the good quality people, we can still provide the service we've been doing for the last sixteen years. That's my concern, because you don't, you don't want the brand level here back to where it's at sixteen years ago. And that's not saying nothing against, uh, the former sheriff. He didn't want to do the funding. The funding is what makes you a rich. The people and the money. Without the money and the funding, I can't do my job. That's why I'm here. I'm asking and begging for money from you.
Sheriff recognizes Mr. Duff.
Uh, Connie, just to make sure that I understood you right, while I go, you made a comment that this is a, a Band-Aid fix. What happens if we start pouring blood again?
Alright, so right now, what we suggest is to move the three pennies from the G P S. That brings us up eighty-three cents with a budget of twenty-six million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand. That'll bring our revenues up to twenty-two million, four ninety-four. You take your fallout, we estimate maybe a million, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand hitting fund balance. When that hits that fund balance in June of twenty-four, and that carries over to twenty-four, twenty-five, that means we've hit seven percent of our fund balance. And what you have to protect is the unassigned fund balance. We have restricted, we have, that's gonna keep growing. But what you have to do is protect that unassigned, unassigned fund balance that is there for emergencies, or it even gives us a good interest rate when we borrow debt. If you have a low unassigned fund balance, you're gonna pay a higher interest rate. So we have two main big projects coming in the future that we're gonna have to address, and we want our interest rates to be as low as we can get it. So with that said, if you do nothing, we move the pennies over, eventually you're gonna have to address eleven pennies.
So if we don't do anything, and so if we didn't take any money from fund balance, we, we say, alright, we're gonna offset it with property tax increases, so.
Exactly.
No, 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 hold on. You're saying at, at the seventy-four cent. I'm saying leave it at seventy-four. No, that's two pennies.
You're hitting twenty pennies.
It's twenty pennies.
Okay. That's twenty-four.
Alright, Sheriff recognizes, so it's Connie, huh?
Do you agree with her, with her suggestion? Do you agree with her suggestion?
Yes, so another, another thing I wanted to point out there is if we do three things, and we go seventy-four percent, seventy-four cents as far as how we're funding the general fund right now to eighty-three cents. That's moving interest, that's moving debt service funding, and it's taking three cents from general purpose schools. So then we're, we're funding general fund at eighty-three cents instead of seventy-four cents. If we do those three things, that means we're gonna use one point five eight seven million dollars in fund balance to fund this budget. And that means at the end of the year, we're looking at forty point six percent upon that, that's our fund. Yeah, which is right in the middle of thirty-five and four. Still compliant at the end of F Y twenty-four.
So is this what's going to the budget, eighty-three pennies? Is this what goes to the budget committee?
If that's what you want me to do.
We're, we're presenting our.
But I, I know you.
Take a vote here.
You can't take a vote, but you can give me a suggestion that is what you would like to see done.
Alright, Mr. Duff. Um, you said seventy-four pennies, or seventy-four pennies, it's twenty pennies is what we have to raise taxes.
Correct.
How long would that be? That would be if they got what they wanted.
And we didn't touch fund balance.
Plus the five percent across the board.
Yes.
It would be twenty pennies.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. Alright, now on the eighty pennies, how much would it be?
Fourteen.
It would be fourteen.
And that's no jail or anything else?
And then the eighty-three, the eighty-three pennies would be?
You would only need eleven.
But that's if we don't use any fund balance. Well, we would be, we're proposing to use fund balance.
You're still in a good position, so what, what we're looking at into the future with this, it may be two years down the road where we have to build a school, or we have to build a jail. You'll have to raise taxes for whatever amount you're gonna borrow money again.
So.
And that will give you the opportunity to raise to cover the salary increases. We don't know, sorry.
Let me add this too, is, is we're working on current projections from the assessor's office. We still don't have new construction numbers. We're going off a very conservative estimate on what we think that revenue's gonna look like. Hopeful it's gonna come in way higher in our conservative projection. Just know that it's still, it's still.
I hope we can add two or three more pennies of growth, though we don't know that number yet.
So.
What do we have? I'm still, I'm, I'm still got it. I'm not being disrespectful. I, I got a couple things I'm just wanting to question on. So at, at seventy-four pennies, if we went with that, if we let all the tax raises across the board, it'd be twenty pennies, and if we go with the best plan that you proposed today, which is eighty-three, it would be eleven pennies, and that would be next year, or we would have.
You can.
We would have to do this plus a tax raise of eleven pennies, is what you're saying.
It, it, we, we have to see what kind of growth we have. So the value, that's the value of.
What we got is, what we got.
Status quo.
Table, status quo, we would have to vote for a tax raise of eleven pennies to do a five percent across the board, plus what the sheriff's office is asking.
Yes.
With the eighty.
Without touching fund balance.
With the eighty-three penny.
Correct.
And, and the next, my next question would be towards the sheriff, um, or the chief. You know, I've looked in as, as we all should have, and most of us have, I'm sure. Um, I, I like to try to compare us with Loudon, because we're, we're pretty comparable. Um, Loudon is paying theirs twenty-seven in starting rate, which is, what is it, forty?
Forty-seven to sixteen.
The, uh, yeah, forty-three, forty-three oh five six starting, and then by the, by the end of the year, they would top out at forty-seven. Um, the city, then our city's paying fifty, uh, fifty thousand starting out, give or take, give or take, uh, five thousand. The Loudon County is full, and they, they don't need any more road officers. Um, and they're, in, in a couple days, they're, I think they're one or maybe two shy in the jail. Um, that, what is the, what's the difference in demographics? Because, you know, I don't know, I don't, I don't understand, because Loudon's full, and they're paying folks the same as what we are. What's different there? What, what's the, what's the, why aren't they running into the same problems we are? I guess is the best question, that.
They, they have had the same problems at the risk, and they, they've got one of my deputies working with them as well.
Right.
My one, they don't need.
Sure.
And, and of course, they have, they have a lot more deputies than I have, so they don't have to work as hard. And I don't think they answer as many calls as we do for service. I mean, you can check that, but I, I haven't checked.
All I know is how many comes in the courtroom. We got about the same in the courtroom, but I don't know how many calls you're right. What, what's the difference, you think, because they have more deputies? How many more deputies do they have than us?
I don't, I don't know the exact number. You can.
I'm not, I'm not.
But we do know they have more.
Yeah, they have more than. They have folks that sent, that do their civil process. Uh, they have folks that go out to, to, uh, high-risk situations. They have a, a SWAT team, if you will, that, that go to set. They have different, uh, groups within the department that, that does stuff, where we are just us.
Right.
Do it all. So their patrol deputies go answer calls for service. They're not worried about civil process. Ours do. That's the same thing Anderson County does. So for example, they've got a civil process division made up of, of several processors. They've got a transportation division, they've got a SWAT team, they've, they've got all that stuff. And, you know, that's one of the things over the years, you know, we've had some school resource officers, um, to the sheriff's office. But when you look at it from a staffing standpoint, we haven't really came in here and said, hey, we need ten, we need fifteen. You know, whenever they built the jail, um, they've done a staffing analysis that told us, hey, you got this many spots, you're twenty-four seven operation. This is how many people it's gonna take to run the jail. We've never done that with patrol, because I, I, I think the number would come back, it would shock us all. And at the end of the day, with the sheriff's that figure, you know, quality over quantity is, is big. And, you know, Loudon County has had some turnover, you know, they, they recently had a, uh.
Like every business has.
Yeah, so they, they recently had a change of administration. That happens. Um, and, you know, same thing here. There, there's probably some things that, that we're doing that people don't like. But here's the thing, under no circumstances are we gonna lower our expectations or our professionalism. And we've probably done things that upset people, but at the end of the day, we have the best interest of every person and everybody in this county. And if we have to work short-handed because we've made some people mad, I'm ready to put my hand for one, go to work. Because at the end of the day, I'm not gonna lower that. That's part of what's happened, but what's happened across the other end of this state, they've hired people that probably shouldn't have been in this job to begin with, and, um, it, it's not been a good press situation for, for law enforcement in general. And, and we don't wanna do that. We don't wanna get to that point. And if, if we have to struggle, nothing's ever easy in our line of work. If it's easy, everybody'd be doing it. And, and we're gonna, we're gonna strap on the guns and the badges and, and do what we do, uh, because. And, and we're gonna, we're gonna strap on the guns and the badges and, and do what we do because that's what we do.
Yes.
I have the answer to your question now. Twenty-nine, you have six more.
You have six months. Alright, so see, my, my thinking is, you know, we're struggling here in Rome County with keeping people. I guess the less workload is all I could come up with, what you said, maybe they don't work as hard. Which I don't think in the law enforcement agent, I think they're working hard regardless. You put, as soon as you strap up, you put your life on the line, that's, that's hard enough work, period. But that's my, that's what I'm having trouble with is they're, they have a full house. And I know they have a lot of turnover, but yet they have a full house. And they have more than we do. And they're, and they're still being able to find people. I don't, I don't, I don't know what that disconnect is. I, you know, I don't, I don't understand.
I need to answer to that. I mean, I saw the whole country's law enforcement problem.
Right, but, you know, I've heard in here that, that money is, is what's gonna fix it. And we don't know if the money's gonna fix it, you know? And, and, and then here's another thing, in, 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 you know, it's just like, it's just like nursing, you know? You couldn't pay me enough money to be a nurse. I ain't gonna do it. You know, there's not enough money to go put your life on the line being a police officer. There's not enough money to go fight a war, wherever we're at war. But, but that's what they sign up to do. You either have people that wanna do that job or you want people that want a lot of money and, and, and have that title. Does that make sense? That, that's another thing I deal with. If, if we stop raising money or we're just getting a bunch of officers in here that want money and don't really care about the job, or do we want? And I guess it all, it all comes back to how do we, how do we get the? And it's the same thing with the, with the volunteer fire department. You just can't find people to get in that position. You can't find people to wanna do that anymore and serve the, serve the people.
You said something that was really, really caught my, my ear was, some people get into this line of work and find out they ain't cut out for it.
Oh, that, that happens a lot.
Oh, yeah.
And, and the, the longer I've been in it, the more you see it. In, in the last five years, there's been a lot of people go because they're just not cut out for it. You know, we've lost some to, some, you know, driving truck, making more money.
Sure.
Just change of pace, just not, not, not wanting to.
Sure.
To do the every, everyday stuff that we do, you know?
Yeah, or a tragic event changed a lot. And we don't, yeah, we don't know what their financials is. They might hesitate that, you know, and still want to be a police officer, but had to go for the money.
I mean, that's true.
Particularly the ones that go to the border.
Sure.
That's all I got.
Sheriff recognizes Mr. Huggs.
Thank you, Sheriff. How much debt will we have to follow off in two years? Do we have any?
Yeah.
We have, I don't have that book on me.
Sixty-seven percent.
Well, the six cents is coming off, but we still have the D O B money going in there. We'll have about, we have one point five, maybe two or three million coming off annual payments.
So we have some.
We have rent.
Debt coming off.
Yes, in twenty twenty-five.
And the balloon down, two years down the road is on it. It's not really putting on a band-aid, it's just, it's using super glue right now to start bleeding.
Right.
So it, it's not as bad as a band-aid because we have some debt coming off.
Right.
And as for Loudon County, I, I have a lot of friends in Loudon County. And the sheriff is recruiting older officers that have been through the academy to be door shakers. So his officers don't have to be door shakers. In other words, they drive along and they physically get out and look at the door and slip apart on the door, we shut your door business-wise. So that, that stress that they don't have to handle. So I guess it just depends on how your department is, is broken up. We, we don't have the luxury of having all of these specialized field door shakers, civil warrant processors and, and all of these different divisions. We have what we have. If we had all of the divisions, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now because we wouldn't be needing more money. But we have all of these divisions. And so we need to fix the problem. And we need to fix the problem not only for, for the sheriff, but things, earlier you said needs to be addressed for all of our employees. You know, as I said the other day, we need to look at our benefit package for this county, for our employees. It, it, it's almost embarrassing. I mean, when you, you look at other departments and other employers that, that have employees and their benefit package, I think it's, I think it's a total package. And, and, and I can see how you separated, but I, I, I think that the benefit package will, will go a long ways. And I, and I think we have to fix the current problem with the sheriff. And I think we've looked at a way to address it with everybody. And I think that's what we need to, we need to think about.
Alright, and guys, let me, let me take this one time, one, two hour, fifteen minutes. I'm about, I'm about to wind it down here.
Him too.
So be quick in, in your, in your speech. Sheriff recognizes Bill.
Oh. A couple of questions. If we done five percent across the board of all county employees without the sheriff's office and just put them all at five, where would we be?
One point five million dollars is what that adds to.
What kind of taxing group? As we stand right now, we're not moving.
If you did anything, it'd be over eleven pennies.
Be eleven.
Six point seven pennies equals.
Probably, well, probably with the value of a penny raised up real close to a dollar fifty or a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand. About ten penny.
Alright, where would we be if we didn't do the five percent for the rest of the county and we just did what the sheriff wants?
You're talking.
How many pennies?
Uh, you, you'd probably reduce to maybe two pennies.
Uh, probably, so eight penny.
Yeah, so you would just have to increase it by.
So the rest of them, other than the sheriff's office, would just be two penny?
But, go back to, I think it's, I think it's closer to ten. If you go back to that first sheet at seventy-four cents, it was twenty pennies, it's about ten of ten. Ten for, ten for a pay, ten for a cross-the-board pay increase five percent and ten for sheriff. Would be what, a good ballpark breakdown for how that would shake out. Is that what you're asking?
That's exactly what I'm asking. So either way, it's a, it's a tax hike. If we choose, if we choose to give raises, it's a tax hike.
If you, if you don't use fund balance. But we're, yeah, we're exceeding our fund balance policy now, so there's.
So you're saying if we, if we use fund balance, there's no tax hike?
Yes.
Correct.
Correct. Very true.
For two years.
For two years, right. So, so there is a tax hike.
At some point, well, it depends. I mean, at some point, when we look at our budget, what we wanna spend and what we make. At some point, we don't want to spend fund balance to get there.
So it'd sort of be like what we did last year, year four. Not tax hike now, but in a year or two, we're going to tax hike.
I mean, it's, I mean, it's hypothetical. We don't know what, what we wanna spend at that point and what we'll be making at that point.
That's all I got, Mr. Sheriff. Alright, Sheriff recognizes Mr. Berry. Mr. Berry will be the last speaker.
I think, I, I think the, the, the bottom line is with the talk of Loudon, whatever, we're two forty, they're one seventy-nine. They've got a new jail, we don't have a new jail. They're building a new school, we don't have a new school. So I think that's, that's what we're talking about in terms of, in terms of where we are and where we're gonna be. Is we know where we are now and that's, that's, that's where we, we, we can go for it. That's, that's the bottom line, it's two forty. I think Loudon's one seventy-nine.
Uh, I don't have that number. I didn't look at the taxes.
Well, it, it might be.
Maybe, but if we're appointed this, so much higher sales tax.
Sure, sure.
Two cities versus five.
Sure.
Uh, higher industrial, larger industrial.
Everything, yeah.
So that's the differences in why the rate, property tax rate.
Part of that is, is we've always been fifty or sixty cents higher on the tax rate than they have.
Seventeen school campuses versus two a creek. Probably six.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's what I'm saying, that's, but that's where we are. Thanks, Mr. Sheriff.
Alright, at this time, I, we cannot vote on anything. You said you wanted to.
You, you can give me a suggestion of.
I, I would suggest that the budget committee has a hard job come ten April. I suggest that every one of the members of the budget committees in here, they are aware of these three proposals. And I would ask the budget committee to review these three proposals in earnest and give Ms. Connie and the county executive a direction that we need to take. And with that said, your emotions to the chairman.
I'm a second.
All those in favor?
I, I.